We can go right to our public hearing. And so next on our agenda is the public hearing for the Morgan Ford Boat Landing. Mr. Chapman.
Paul Schrocky is opening the PowerPoint set up. Warren County is planning to construction of a boat landing parking facility adjacent to the new Morgan Ford Bridge to improve access to the main stem of the Shenandoah. This is a critical location due to the fact it is a history of being heavily used by the public despite it being underdeveloped as a proper access point. The site is also nearly equidistant between two other heavily used landing points at Riverton and Farne River View Road, Chango Farms. This will provide the first public access to the main stem downstream from Christian College where an existing dam limits access. A parking area showcasing low impact development techniques will be included in the project as well as educational signage focused on conservation, non-point source pollution, recreational opportunities. In early 2018, the Department of Transportation completed a replacement Morgan Ford Bridge. The landing will be adjacent to the bridge project. While the bridge was a $7 million project, improvement of the boat landing area was not being eligible expense. Portage gene around the bridge is no longer required in public use, the landing likely to increase. The landing area, now at this point, I want to switch over. Dwayne, if you could hit the lights on the side back there for me. Switch over to the PowerPoint. So again, we're planning to upgrade the boat landing parking facility adjacent to the new Morgan Ford Bridge to improve access to the main stem. There's been an informal landing there for many, many, many decades long before I came here. And going through that process with the Morgan Ford, there are a number of comments from the public hearing that that site needed to be upgraded. Again, it's been a long history of being used by the public despite being underdeveloped as a proper access point. This map shows the different landing areas that are available in the county. There's Morgan Ford, and you've got the Farne River View that is about a half day's float or so north down the main stem. And then you've got another landing near the river, the bridge, the Park Warren Lounge, the football golf club, and that's now under new management, and they pay to use that facility. And then the Riverton Landing, which is in the town of Rockaway, which is maintained by the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. The site identified, part of the property identified yellow is the property that the county has acquired over the last couple of years. A chunk of the area right next between the bridge and that area is part of the BDOT Lightaway, and there's a piece owned by the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. BDOT, again, had completed the Morgan Ford Bridge project, $7 million project, did not include any improvements to the boat landing. The landing area that was being utilized prior to the bridge construction is owned by the Game and Inland Fisheries and was undersized, just under two tenths of an acre. If you look at that map, the area green is actually the area that was owned by the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. The area in blue and the area in brown were acquired by the county for the adjacent property owner. And we had talked about that when the bridge project was going on, and Mr. Chapman was willing to work with the county to try to get some additional acreage to be able to expand the landing. The area in blue, he donated to the citizens of Warren County, and the area in brown was purchased, I believe, for $10,000 from Mr. Chapman. He owned additional lots down along the river and maintained most of those in his ownership. So Warren County has been approved for $100,000 in funding that we requested from the DuPont settlement funding for the implementation of the project. The initial project budget was $578,000. Now, that was a Cadillac, and that included other amenities and bought at the site, and that included putting the entire project out to bid, and that was provided by an engineered landscape architect engineer. Since that time, the project scope was scaled back. When we learned we were, instead of getting $250,000 DuPont money, and we're getting $100, we scaled back the project, including the elimination of paving on the lower portion of the site. The Game and the Fisheries also agreed they're going to install a concrete ramp. The county now plans to utilize county resources for construction rather than bidding and out. Reduction in the project scope and utilization of county staff for construction have resulted in the project being reduced to approximately $150,000. We have $24,976 that's set aside from FY 1819, and then the 1920 budget, we have about $25,000 that's been set aside as well. So we have approximately our entire estimated $50,000 share put aside. The budget, if we take the down $150, really doesn't include site lining. Excuse me, does include site lining, which would help with security at the site. There's a picture right there, that's the pole installed by the power company down at Farne River View Landing. We've got three of them, I believe, on the site. And these sites are open 24/7. A lot of people go fishing at night and need to provide access, and also makes it easier for the sheriff's department and other resources when they drive by with the areas lit. These are two of the projects that we've recently done. On the left-hand side is the rendering at the top, and then the actual, that's the aerial photograph of the site at the bottom. That's the Farne River View Boat Landing and Ramp that our staff built. On the right is the boat slide at Simpson's Landing. Simpson's was the existing facility down near Thunberg Farms, and our staff built that beautiful canoe slide there that served that site. That site sits real high, about 20 foot off the river, and it's always been difficult for people to get up and down the riverbank, and now those steps make it a lot easier to get in and out. The Morgan Ford Landing project was included in FY 1820, capital improvement plan project was ranked the number three priority for general services and number seven priority for the county. This is a drone shot that we got a couple of weeks ago, and I've got some drone shots and videos that were taken, but this is a weekend day. This shows the utilization of the boat landing. It's packed beyond belief on some weekends. There's our other locations, good and bad. What we're trying to do is really provide some order to the site, and I think... I'm gonna try to talk loud for a second, walk down here, and I'll show the layout. Really, this is the edge of the bridge. The upper portion is the area that would look to be paved. This is the existing pavement BDOT put in with the bridge project, just a single lane down to this point right here. But this is the majority of what would be paved on the upper portion. This would stay gravel, and the ramp itself would be located down river's edge.
Did you say that this is a typical day?
This is a typical weekend day, okay? Weekend day, Saturday, Sunday.
There's 47 cars on there.
Yeah, if you drop down the week, it gets a lot used. Almost wishes we had an extra lot next door. So Warren County would like to begin construction as soon as possible to hopefully prevent our losing the grant. We look forward to providing the facility to our community, expanding public access to the river. Again, you can see the darker area that's on kind of above, the bridge above it there that would be paved, the lower portion would remain gravel. That's the area that gets us scoured. And if you look at the triangle down the tip, that's the area that we acquired by gift. It's actually where the landing... So the Game and the Fisheries on kind of normal or low water conditions didn't know where people technically put in. So we've got a cooperative grant agreement between BDGIF, the county was approved by the board September 3, 2019. This agreement has the county assuming responsibility of development and maintenance of the facility. The county has experienced the operation maintenance of public boat landing facilities. We've got Simpson's Landing, the Riverside Boat Landing, Catlock Ford, which was a grant project that I've worked on in the 1990s. The public football golf club ramp, which is now in private hands for operation and maintenance. And the Farne River View, which we constructed in Chango Farms. So our partners are expected to inspect the sites along with daily patrol by the sheriff's office. And that's the end of my presentation. If you happen to answer any questions, if the board has any either before or after public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
How many parking spaces are we gonna have in the new...
I'm looking at Brandy, I don't understand what happened. If you got 21, then you got six trailer spaces, which are basically double spaces. So in theory, that's another 12, so about 33 formal spaces, and then you've got some informal and inch area that you can park vehicles along the pavement edge.
Okay, so if I understand the new plan, on a typical summer day or a weekend day, you've got 47 cars there, and now we're only covering about 32, 35?
You're maximizing your ability of use of the site. You could probably stick another 10 around there on the edge, but you know, the future growth of the county, if you double the utilization of the site, you can outgrow it quickly. Know that about it.
Well, I would just...
That's all the Airbnb work with on board, so.
Well, I know, that's part of what I'm getting at. I'm not against it, but I'm looking at the utilization of it. I mean, we're immediately going into a system to where we've got more people that are coming than we can actually accommodate.
And the main thrust of the Department of Game and the Fisheries providing access and parking for boats, people putting boats in and out of the river.
Correct.
A lot of boats there. Some are boating, some are swimming, some are fishing, some are doing the other stuff. That's why we haven't included any of the other amenities to make it more of a pork place, there's more to concentrate on the ramp and the boating access for the public.
Now, I don't know if anybody else has questions, but I've got a couple here. The, is that lighting an absolute necessity?
I think not from Game and the Fisheries, but it is open 24/7, and I can, my best guess would be the sheriff would certainly like a lighter to there to... We've had a murder at that location over the years. We've had a lot of other activities that I would say were a little more nefarious, but I think having some lighting there, those 30-foot wooden poles hold up, we've got another normal concrete base, a metal light pole in Easton that had held up during a couple of floods and they've been under. I think it's prudent to put the lighting in, but you know, it's the ultimate decision to have to make.
Now, I understand that the boat landing is something that we should be proud of. Do we have, could we not, not put shrubs everywhere and acquire more, acquire more parking spaces?
Our zoning ordinance requirements require a certain amount of tree space. I think it's 5% of parking lot area in Karen's here on the next room, but it was a required minimum that, and we're not exempt from the rules that everybody else has to follow, so that's why you have the green islands, they have to include those, and they have a certain number of trees per parking space they have to plant.
Also, certain trees on that diagram are actually existing. The neighbor was concerned about leaving some large sycamore trees, so we had tried to leave those and also maintain the required five-foot buffer.
That's all that I have. Anybody else have anything?
Well, of course I do. I've been pretty open about, you know, I want to improve this area. I understand how important it is to make it a safe area for people to get in and out. My concerns are, and for those of you who don't know, I live on the river in Bentonville. I lived in my husband's family's home that they lived in for, I've been there over 100 years. The flood of '42 didn't get in the house, but it got right to the house. So I understand the river very well, and what I want the public to understand is, when we get into this agreement with DGIF, whatever we put there, it's a 25-year agreement to replace it. So think about how many times, if we had this there in the 1718 year, where every other week we were flooding. The lighting for this area alone is $41,500 to put in. So we can say we hope the river doesn't make it out, but I contacted, and I'm not sure if Mr. Fink is here, and you can speak for him, if he is, I contacted DGIF and asked them if any of these things were negotiable. And that's when I found out that once you put them in, you use the DuPont money to do that, we are responsible to replace it for 25 years. So they were surprised that we were gonna put lights there because they don't put lights at a riverboat landing because they feel that they're gonna get washed away. They put them at lakes because lakes don't flood the way rivers do. The other thing, this area is not the best area for a ramp, which I'm not saying don't put the ramp there, but this area, the water, if you go down there now, you're gonna go probably three-quarters of the way out across the river because the river is down so low right now. So you have to have an extremely long ramp to be effective at low water times. And that was it, I was surprised, and I thought that everybody wanted a ramp everywhere. So those are my concerns. I want this to be nice, and I'm all for, you know, using the money that's due to the parking lot so that thing doesn't wash out, you know, and cement is what it took to keep the south entrance to bridge there. So that's my thoughts on this.
Any other questions? Mr. Chapman?
Yes, sir.
Do you know when we're gonna lose this ramp? When do we have to start it? I'm looking at Brandy, she...
They haven't given us a definite date, but... I would guess before too long, they are gonna say they would like to see some movement in the process before the funding is returned and given to another locality.
Ideally, we want to construct all these projects, and we're working with this color for the Bentonville, and I hope that whatever we end up looking at here, we can look at one there, we apply for DuPont funding. But you wanna do it late summer, early fall, when the water's at its lowest, like now, so that you don't have the risk of getting a flood during middle of construction. So ideally, if you're able to build it, you can build it this late summer and fall, be able to knock it out while the water's down.
We also have restrictions for the removal of certain sized trees due to the presence of Indiana bats, so that's something else we need to think of during the construction timeline.
So if I understand correctly, you don't really know when the grant's gonna go away?
We've gone to ask that question because the board had approved the agreement previously, and our landscape architect is ready to move forward with construction documents as soon as we tell them we are ready.
Do you have any additional comments? I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for us to move forward with this. If we get $100,000 to improve that corner down there, I think it'd be a real help. You can tell by the amount of traffic that we used the other weekend that needs to be improved, and $300,000 is something I would think that we should really consider moving forward with.
Okay, thank you. We need to open up the public hearing on this, and would anyone else like to speak on this at all?
Mr. Chairman, a few individuals have signed up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any questions?
Question on 1106 Thatch Road. This is the first one I've seen in this presentation that's very helpful. Wish I'd have seen it earlier. And I understand now that we only have less than $50,000 of DuPont money associated with this project. I think it's a good idea, you know, we need access to the river. I don't believe we have lighting and all the other accesses to the river, so I would know that we're really needed here. Because that kind of money, and it's at risk of being washed out, I think we ought to consider eliminating that piece out of this proposal. As it deals with the shrubbery, citizens ask for and are granted variances all the time, so it may be possible to increase the number of parking spots by, I mean, the county submit a request for variance because it's in the benefit of the public. Now, I think I'm moving pretty quick on this, so we don't risk losing the DuPont money.
Mr. Schrocky, is there anyone else that's signed up?
Yes, Mr. Mark Frandberg.
Good evening, I'm Mark Frandberg, the Shenandoah Riverkeeper, and I just want to voice my strong support for the improvements to the boat landing at Morgan Ford. As a Shenandoah Riverkeeper, we believe that the best stewards of the river are the users of the river, and doing this improvement to this boat landing will allow future generations to grow in love and to support, protect this asset that we have. And I agree with you Supervisor Colours about our need to be good stewards of Warren County taxpayer dollars as well, but I really believe that this ramp is just critically important for three primary reasons. First, the residents of Warren County deserve to have a place to safely recreate on the river, and during this time of COVID-19, it's become immediately apparent to more and more people and families that the river's the perfect place to recreate and be outside and enjoy nature, and do so while social distancing. You can't find a new kayak or canoe within 250 miles of here because everybody's fallen in love with the river, and we'd be doing ourselves a disservice by not acting upon this. Second, the improvements to the Morgan Ford Bridge will directly benefit the many businesses in Warren County. Restaurants, campgrounds, grocery stores, and lodging establishments are all there and will benefit by having improved landing, a safe landing, where people can come and launch their canoes, launch their kayaks, and enjoy a safe place to recreate on the river. And then third, it's good for Warren County government to have this landing, because it's gonna generate thousands of dollars in tax revenue, and it's the right thing to do for citizens, and it's the right thing to do for our budget, and it's not often that we get $100,000 provided to us by this DuPont settlement, and it may not ever come again, so I believe that we need to act on it as quickly as possible. And finally, I understand and respect that, you know, we're gonna be on, Warren County's gonna be on the hook for any replacement equipment, picnic tables, things of that nature, but we're blessed by the benefit of geography in Warren County in that we're at the bottom of the watershed for the Shenandoah, and we have roughly 72 hours of lead time due to the gauges from NOAA and USGS to know that a foot is coming, and that we have ample time to get in there, to pull back the picnic tables, remove the portage guns, and put them to higher ground. And so for all those reasons, we strongly support the improvements to the Morgan Ford Boat Landing. Thank you.
Mrs. Schrocky, is anyone else signed up?
Yes, and I apologize, I'm really difficult to read in their last name, but I believe it's Wayne, and it's a hyphenated name with Taylor.
I'm Wayne Chapman, Taylor, I lived at Morgan Ford Farms, I have a close to the area there. This is our 41st year of farming here in Warren County, and this is a wonderful place that is still has a basic of farming and is very important. I'd just like to sort of mention as a point of history that would be interesting is that a Senator Ball, who lived nearby, gave this to the Department of Inland Fisheries for this municipality of Warren County in 1958, so that's where it came from, it was a gift actually, and it was at a time when there was an historic African-American community that had been living there for over two centuries. At any rate, it is also a part of the Rockland Agricultural District, which is the first one in Virginia, Andy Guest formed that, and it's passed off to him actually for due recognizes, and in that way, what it does actually is ask for people to be sensitive to the issues of farming and how they will lead us to the future as well as a big part. Secondly, it has been a conservation district. Within a conservation district, there's now over 6,000 acres of land that is permanent agricultural conservation, and that's not something that people did because it was economic, because as George Washington said, it's some of the finest farmland in America, and we're lucky to have it, and to be a part of it. It's also now part of the National Register of Historic Places, actually, and that's a 6,000, a 12,000 acre area actually connected to a larger one in Clark County and then up over the mountain, so it's actually, this is one of the biggest National Register of Historic Places in America, 60,000 acres. It is also a very rural environment, and I think really the objection I have to while we're doing here, yes, of course it's gonna be a place where we all come, yes, it has been for centuries, it's also been a place for baptisms, it's also been a place for trading, and long before, this river actually, at some point was raised, it's a very shallow place, and that's what makes Morgan Ford what it is, and that goes back to George Washington, actually, who said this is one of the best forts in the 20 miles, actually, at some point, and he led, word Fairfax, people across it. The very rural area, I think, is one of the things I'd really like to address here, I think, is because, yes, we do need to improve it, we need to make it safer, I think that the boat landing should be sensitive to the fact that it is a very shallow area and that you have to put concrete a long way out there, I think is a problem. In my 41 years here, we have survived three 100-year floods there in large, and they scour up the valley there, and I think that the long-range planning and maintenance, I think, are very much things that you all are right to be considering at this time of this, because we will do it again, obviously. But it is a place of peace and quiet and rural character that has been nurtured for 250 years. The lights in particular, I think, are a violation of the very area this would be in, and I think this, turning it into an all-night or all-night place, I think, is asking for trouble, I think, and it's asking for it to be, to have to be supervised, as has been pointed out about the murder, it is a place to go and commit mischief at times over all that time, and that sort of seems to be the nature of it, it will have to be policed, I think, if it's gonna be an all-night, all-night lights on, but that really does shadow the rural character of what's around it, and I really think you should respect that, please, and I ask for that, for all the people that have come before us that have preserved that area and that will be coming after us, I think, we don't need the lights, please don't do that, it will affect the wild night, it'll affect the farmer's day, we don't need an all-night thing going on there, we got relationships, so. I would ask you to respect the rural character, and that that needs to be nurtured here, please, thank you.
Mrs. Schrocky, is anyone else signed up?
No one else has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
No one else has signed up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes. Could we give, Paul, we'll leave your name and address, and address again.
Are you sure about that?
Paul Hammer, 1221 Valley B Drive. This is another thing I want to speak about, but I didn't have a written down, so I quickly wrote it down. Back in the eighties, we'd have a flood come through. And I don't know what it was. There were camper parts, cows, everything you could think of hanging from the tops of the trees down in this area. This is a very bad place for flooding. It has two real sharp turns right below the Ford.
It has two real sharp turns right below the Ford. This is not a place for a park light set. To me, it's a waste of money again. I have never said, or have I heard friends say, whenever we go fishing, I wish there were pole lights here. Flashlights, four headlights, and car headlights are a fisherman's best friend. That's all we've ever needed. I think, like the gentleman that spoke before me, respect what's there, respect the nature. I think somebody likes Hayden Blacktop, it seems to be Blacktop on everything. I don't think we need Blacktop there. I do think that it's already a nice place. You put lights there, who's to say? You know, that just, that just attracts, I don't want to say the younger generation because I was once the younger generation, but I know what I did back in the days. And I don't think I would have done it if there wasn't lights there. I think there would be more trouble with lights there. I'm sure that the sheriff's office doesn't need, and I don't know how often they do go down there to look around. But to me, this is just another waste of money that the county doesn't need to do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? On call. The public hearing is now closed, which is the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to go forward. I move that the board supervisors off the last staff to continue moving forward with the proposed improvements to the Morgan Ford boat landing, capping the total expenditures of the project at $150,000.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sharrock, could we get a roll call on this, please?
No discussions?
Yeah, discussion? No discussion?
I just wanted everyone to know, I am not against improvement. I'm against the lights. I could move forward with this if we would take the lights out. I just know that's, number one, water and electricity doesn't, they don't mix. So the poles go down, you've got exposed wires and a flood, there's an issue. And trust me, you're going to have a flock of people to go see how high water is and what's floating down the river. And if you've got holes in the electric wires down, there's an issue. Plus the expense of putting them back. So I am not against doing improvements. I think we need the parking lot if we have to do the shrubs. I'd like to see if we can go variance against ourselves and move away so much of the shrubs because there have been, I know VDOT put shrubs there and they washed out and they said, we're not doing that again. So if we could move the lights out, I'm all for this.
Mr. Fox, would you like to add a motion?
Any further discussion?
Oh, I would like to agree with Ms. Colors, so and with the gentleman who spoke, I think that lights often encourage nighttime participation, not discourage it. And so I think that the lighting, and we don't have lighting anywhere else, do we?
We do.
We do. Where are the lights in the other boat landings?
If you go down Eastwood Park, which is the parking lot serves the boat landing, we actually have the concrete bases with metal poles at that location. At Shenandoah Farms, we have three that wouldn't type, and they're cheaper. They're assault valvating power or raptic electric now. And, Brandon, you remember the cost of those, much cheaper than the other ones?
They were much cheaper. And the thought behind adding the lights at that site is since it is open really until dark, if somebody is floating down the river and it takes a little bit longer than you thought, or you're trying to get out of the river and get to your vehicle and you have no parking lot lights, that it is a little bit difficult to drag a boat off the ramp or back your trailer into the ramp. So that's why it was originally included.
It doesn't have to be eight, it can be one or two, but I think, again, knowing, I live in that area and if you go by at night, the kids that like to park and hang out, they like to be in the dark section if they're drinking or doing whatever. Having a lighter too, I think that discourages folks. If you're, the sheriff's deputy car is coming by and the car's eliminated, you can see the people inside, I think that discourages inappropriate behavior at the location. But again, it's, we have to keep it open 24/7 for DGIF because there are a lot of folks that night fish, catfish, and other stuff. And at least if you have, and I understand this close concern, Wayne is the reason why we're keeping that large tree there. We've got it as a little bit larger island because Wayne wanted, they talked to me, called me when we were out there clearing the site. But I think if you could at least put one or two on the upper side, not down low by the river, but on the upper side, it would provide some security at night, not like opening down by the river where it might get knocked out by the direct flow of the river, but it would make a little bit more secure location.
And with Farm Service, we were, before we signed a maintenance agreement on that one, we had Matt let in Sheriff McKeithrin, and he was actually in favor of the lights because immediately when they pull into the entrance, if there's something going on on the opposite side of it, they can see it a lot quicker than waiting until the headlights hit it.
And I think, as far as other, we have lights, pole lights at the Riverton Landing. I think that's game and efficient. They have a couple lamp heads down there. Simpsons, we have one light, I think, in the park, maybe one in the parking lot.
At least, I guess.
At, I'm trying to remember, Catlifford, I don't think we have.
I wasn't involved in that.
Yeah, I don't think we have one at that location. But the dusted dawn lights by RAC are pretty cheap.
They do have 90-degree hulls, so they are dark side compliant. We do want to lessen the impact on any neighboring homes and stuff like that. We obviously don't want bright light shining in their windows or any kind of...
A lot of farmers use those dusted-on lights, you know, our company charges, they're easily like a flat fee. But they're more economical than if we, you know, put a dozen lights in like at Easton. So again, Ms. Colors, I would suggest if you would allow one or two for some security, using like 30-foot wood pole, they're much, it would be much higher than the flood, so I think less chance of getting knocked out by floodwaters.
Well, I think we need to ask the people, I know the bridge, the building on the bridge, there were a lot of people that didn't have issues, didn't want to see the bridge. Are they going to want to see what they like? And the gentleman has spoken to that. And that lights are beyond all-night challenge. So I don't know the impact of the people that live close there and what that's going to be on them. So those are my concerns. I'm not trying to be hard here about this, but I just can't see putting that amount of money, you got to replace it for 25 years, and knowing that that river can take it out in a heartbeat.
The lighting would be directional, right? I got my microphone. I'm just saying that the lighting would be directional, it's not like it's going to shine. It's dark, it's dark and blind, so it has to be full cut off, flat, so it shines straight down, not out. Yes, sir.
And you said maybe give five with two as opposed to whatever. How does that impact the budget, the grant, or whatever, if we limit the scope? Is it still basically a one-third, two-thirds match type of thing?
There's not on this one. We, when we do submit the draft construction documents, we will have to note that the lighting has been eliminated or reduced. And I don't foresee that being a problem with DGIF, but I would have to let them comment on it.
Look, Mr. Chairman, he put an email to me, and I wish I had time to print it out, was that he recommended that they would require us to replace that, whatever's used with the DuPont money. And that he would suggest if we were to go with the items, the lights, the shrubs, that we pay for them out of our budget and then we have the discretion saying we're not doing that.
That's correct. It's the same maintenance agreement we have on Farm Service View alone with the landing off Downing Farm, the central landing.
And the things did happen down there as far as a big flood comes through. I think as mentioned before, they could come out and get the picnic tables if they got what they could. But then if there's other damage, I know we've seen that in floods before down at the softball fields, Parks Rec, where, you know, we have our own flood insurance which reverses, reverses us. Or if it's declared a disaster, there's steam and money there for that too. So I don't think some of those things would happen, we would get reversed.
I think we have a $25,000 deductible in flood, anything over that is covered by insurance.
But is that county law or is that...
I think it's county.
Okay. And I know too, I saw on somebody today, they said they were at the Wealthport, Young Grove, Wealthport. And they said there weren't really people out there Sunday playing golf because of the heat, but they said that little parking lot was jammed up. And of course, that's probably the best location because it's the deepest location. But I think some of these comments have been made or been well presented as far as it is shallow there. However, there were some, I don't know if that would help or not with that lighting. And again, I guess I hope with the bridge being elevated, it reduces the number of times of flood. But I know this Wayne, I guess, before we were able to put up gates that would prevent people from going over, when it was flooded, we had one young girl that ran off, ran into it and floated down and unfortunately she drowned. And I know we talked about the murder, but I think there was a couple other people that actually ran off the bridge into the river. So I don't know if that little bit of lighting, lighting would help or not. But again, I think it would be beneficial just to keep people being there. And I thought the Luray, I thought the Luray boat landing, I thought that was closed. They closed an hour, but I think you go down there after dark or, maybe not. I may be mistaken, I may be getting mixed up with the Easton Park. I know that's gone to dust.
Easton's closed, the parking lot, the boat landing's still open in Easton, you go straight, you're in the water.
I know what I'm thinking about. I think down there, you're only supposed to go down there to fish or boat or swim. You're not just supposed to go in there and hang out. That's my mistake. So anyway, that's all I have. I support Mr. Fox's motion with reduced lighting. I want to admit that.
I'll amend that to that for reduce. I'll make the motion with a reminder.
Any additional, any additional comments?
Chairman, if you have one, if I have to...
Wayne has something.
Why is that one would be added? It's the ecology, it's the impact of the ecology of that area there, I think, to have the wildlife, having that, having all-night lights on in a place that has been a rural area for thousands of years. I just, be sensitive to that, I think, really. I would like, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that wildlife have a chance, basically, instead of just, there's another thing that erodes their place. We have, that area out there has so much natural wildlife, you know, and much of that land hasn't, everybody's been sprayed. It has a natural insect life, it has a natural bird life, and it's got the bear and the coyote and everybody else in there. And I just think that that's going to upset people, lights on every night. That's, that just really does that. Now previously, I think the part, I saw a sign that says closed at dark at some point. Seems to me I've remembered something about that, but I don't know that. But I don't think that we need all-night lights there. That's all I ask. Thank you for listening, if you have, out of turn.
Any additional questions, concern?
So what is...
So what is the motion?
Can we have clarification?
Yes, the current motion was made by Mr. Fox and by Mr. Carter, which was the authorization of staff to continue moving forward. Okay, with the lights?
With reduced, with reduced lights.
With reduced lights, yes.
And we did have a second, Mr. Carter. And could we get a roll call, please, Mrs. Sharrock?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Lieutenant Perry?
Thank you.